Before this meeting, before this meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on mute till you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we're using Zoom to host the city council regular meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and enabled to speak to the council. To comment under oral communication or on any agenda item, you're allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails limited to 350 words can also be submitted to the city clerk and it will be read into the record. This word limit is to is set to adhere to the typical three-minute time allowance. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, because we're all not in the same room, all but
Thank you. Rule call, please.
Councilmember Lawler?
Present.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Mecha check?
Present.
Mayor Potem Elahi?
Present.
And Mayor Luthold?
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right, so calling to order the City Council of Monte Sereno regular meeting for Tuesday, December 7th. And do we have any changes to the orders of the day, Mr. Leonardo or Ms. Radcliffe?
I do not have any changes to the order.
None from city manager.
Okay, thank you. No presentations are scheduled for this evening, so we now move to oral communications. Oral communications are a chance for members of the public to speak to the council on matters which are not on the calendar. If the matters are on the calendar, we'll get to them and take public comment as they come up. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the council tonight on matters not on calendar? If so, please raise your hand to be recognized. And we'll recognize you. Seeing none, we will close public comment and we will now move to written communications. And Ms. Radcliffe, have we received any written communications that did not make it into the agenda packet?
We have then.
Okay.
So moving now to the consent calendar, the consent calendar is a group of actions that will normally be considered as one action and taken together. If we have any members of the public wishing to request that a matter be polled or to speak to any matters on the consent calendar this evening, please prepare to line up and be ready to raise your hand during the public comment section, which we'll get to in a moment. Normally, we have give council an opportunity to ask brief questions and without pulling matters from the calendar. Or we can, if there are any members of the public or council members wishing to pull matters for full discussion, they may do so at this time. At this point, I would like to go ahead and exercise my prerogative to pull item seven from the consent calendar. This is the IT agreement. So I will go ahead and pull item seven for formal discussion. We'll now be talking about the consent calendar as items one through 10, with the exception of item seven. Any other council members wishing to pull any items or brief questions about items on the consent calendar? Seeing none. Let's go ahead and open this to public comment. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on any of the matters one through 10 with the exception of seven? If so, please raise your hand to be recognized. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. And do we have a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
Second.
We have a motion from council member Mecha check with a second from council member Turner. Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Mecha check?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Elahi?
Yes.
And Mayor Luthold?
Yes.
And that motion passes five zero.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and we'll take item seven on the consent calendar at the end of the calendar this evening. So let's go ahead and move now to public hearings. The unfinished, we have no unfinished business. And moving to new business, first item of new business is to appoint two applicants to fill two vacancies on these Monte Sueno Site and Architecture Commission. Do we have a staff report on this matter? Mr. Leonardo? Or are you going to be presenting on this? You're going to have anyone presenting on this?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I was muted. So yes, every year we have the opportunity to appoint new members to the site and architecture committee. This year, we have the opportunity to appoint, it's a five-member committee. This year, we have the opportunity to appoint two members for two vacancies. Next year, we will have three vacancies. We will be recommending appointing three members. So we had, I believe it was three applicants apply. And there are two recommendations put forth by staff for those to be chosen. We are open for questions, comments from council on the proposed appointees.
Right. If, do we have any initial questions from council? We'll need to open public comment. And we can also, if we choose here from the applicants, I believe we have some or all of the applicants present this evening. But if we, if council would like to give them the opportunity, or if anyone would like to take the opportunity to address the council, we will come to that in a moment. And any initial council comments before we open public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open this item for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, including applicants or members of the public, please raise your hand and we will recognize you to address the council. First up, we have Narayan. We'll go ahead and recognize you and you'll have the, I believe, three minutes this evening to address the council.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Narayan Balasubramanian. I live in 16090 Richcrest Avenue. I have, I lived in Monte Sereno since 2011, so for the past 10 years. So both my kids have gone through the Saratoga Schools. And I've also volunteered on the site and architecture commission for four years, pub that I thoroughly enjoyed. And you know, what attracted me to Monte Sereno was its the greenery, the serene nature, you know, the huge logs. And given an opportunity to so, I would like to preserve the nature, you know, as it is today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next hand up is Vijaya Rangasai. If I've pronounced that anywhere close, we'll go ahead and recognize you for three minutes to address the council.
Thank you, council, for giving me this opportunity to speak. I would like to recommend Narayan Balasubramanian to be on the site and architecture commission. In interest of full disclosure, I am his wife. And we both have lived here for the past 10 years. Like Narayan mentioned, we have raised our kids here. We love the rustic atmosphere that Monte Sereno offers. I've closely observed Narayan during his previous tenure on the site and architecture commission and you know, really admired how conscientious he was in making some of in making all of his decisions while on the commission. He would take a personal interest. He would go personally visit the site. Make sure that, you know, everything is done as per code, but also in maintaining the integrity and the nature and surroundings of the city. I strongly recommend Narayan for being on the site and architecture commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this matter this evening, please go ahead and raise your hands. Otherwise, we will close public comment. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment at this time and return this now to council member discussion. And then a vote on this matter. So any discussion, council members? As council member Mecha check?
I was on the site and architectural commission when Steve White and I believe that the city of Monte Sereno is super fortunate to have be willing to volunteer his time and his expertise. And I just think that's great. So he would have my full support.
Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you. Yes, given the challenges that we are facing with our objective standards and SB nine, et cetera, I would fully support re appointing Mr. White to the site and architecture commission as well as Narayan. After all, he has had experience and understands what is necessary. So I would support appointing both of those. Thank you.
Thanks, but I'm going to require you, Ms. Lawler, to pronounce Narayan's last name correctly. If you're going to
Oh dear, okay. Narayan Rangasai? Hopefully that was close. I apologize.
All right, okay. Any other council member comments this evening? Sounds, yes, Mayor Potem Elahi.
Yeah, I do agree, council member Lawler, this is going to be a difficult year. We're going to spend a lot of time trying to do objective standards or figuring out the repercussions that result from it. And yeah, we are fortunate to have Chair Stephen White apply again and Narayan also has experience. So I would support the point of those two.
Oh, come on, you got to get a stab at Narayan's last name.
Well, I, I don't know if I have it wrong, but I have a Balasubramanian here, but that's his last name.
All right, there you go. Well done. That's, that's what I see on the application. Okay. Yes, so in the interests of moving ahead, it sounds like we have a consensus to reappoint Mr. White and Narayan Balasubramanian. So let's go ahead and make that the vote at this time. If anyone is not in agreement with those two choices, vote no, which would be counting as a vote no on both. And then we would take a look at whether it is, whether we have the votes to approve those two. And whether we need some alternate way to count the votes here. So
And Mayor, I think, I think it may be simpler just to have a regular motion to approve the candidates with the second and then just have a vote on that motion as stated.
All right, so a motion to approve the candidates, White and Balasubramanian. Do we have a motion for those two? Yes.
I'll second it. Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, councilmember Mecha check with a second by councilman, Mayor Potem Elahi. Mayor, councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Mecha check?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Elahi?
Aye.
Mayor Luthold?
Yes.
And that motion passes five zero.
Thank you. All right, item number two now is discussion and potential adoption of a resolution in support of the California Initiative Constitutional Amendment, providing for local land use and zoning laws override conflicting state laws. And let's begin with a, do we have a staff report on this matter?
Yes, thank you. I, this is Diana Perkins, the city planner. And this item has been placed on tonight's agenda pursuant to a request from a council member to discuss the ballot initiative, which is seeking to protect local control of land use decisions. And staff recommends that the city council discuss and potentially adopt a resolution supporting this initiative. And that completes the staff report and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any council members wishing to expand on the staff report? Or do we have any initial questions before we open to public comment? Ms. Turner?
Yes, I just wanted to just add a little bit to the staff report. We have until late April 2022 to obtain 1.3 million valid signatures from California from registered voters for the November 8, 2022 ballot. And the initiative was actually written ensure full compliance with all state environmental laws and fair housing and anti-discrimination laws. This, this initiative does not conflict with CEQA and in fact helps the local agency ensures that new development gets sufficient environmental review and protections. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other council questions before we open public comment and then we'll come back to council discussion on this matter? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open this matter to public comment. If we have any members of the public wishing to speak about this potential action to support this initiative, then please raise your hand to be recognized at this time. All right, seeing no members of the public wishing to comment, we will close public comment and now return this to council discussion. Council members, discussion on this matter? All right, well, I have a question briefly for our city attorney. Is it correct to assume that it is appropriate for the council to adopt the draft resolution? If the council is so inclined at this time, this is something within the council's power to speak up on the initiative?
Yes, it's perfectly fine for the city to take a formal position on the initiative. What it can't do is spend public money to further advocate, you know, for or against ballot measure. But taking a position is perfectly fine.
All right, thank you. Mayor Potem Elahi?
Thank you. Yeah, I think this is an important initiative. To me, I think it goes to the very essence of our democracy. I think, you know, the ultimate power has to be with the people and not with any governmental agencies that decides. And I think one of the great things about the American democratic system is that our cities are directly in touch with the constituents because they can come and address us, tell us what they want. And that's, and what we do affects their lives more than what legislature does back in Sacramento. So I think this fundamentally attacks that by saying, no, we in Sacramento can decide what kind of housing you need and where should it be built. The constitution protects against discrimination and we will stand up for affordable housing and everything else that is required to make, to ensure that there's no discrimination in any way. But ultimately, the citizens have to have a say on, you know, what kind of housing would work. Where do they choose to buy people? So when people come to Monte Sereno and decide they want to buy a house here, they're looking for certain things. And for legislation to say now, you're going to be living in duplexes or perplexes because we think more houses are needed is not appropriate because there are cities where duplexes and duplexes and multiple apartment buildings are welcome. And they look forward to it because they have the zoning, they have this land, they have the plots, but in one discernment, we don't have it. And requiring us to do that, I mean, A-Bag already comes up with the requirements that we build 192 more units when we have no plots. And I know we, Mr. The Miller told, did a fantastic job arguing against that and appealing against that, but didn't get anywhere. So ultimately, I think the power has to be with the citizens and our citizen. And the city council has to be answerable to the citizens and we can't just hide behind and say, okay, the state legislature did this and we don't have a choice anymore. So you guys are stuck with four places right next to you. So I would, I would strongly encourage that we support this initiative and do whatever legally we can do as city council and then again as individual, do whatever we can do with citizens of the United States.
Thank you. Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you. Well said, Mayor Potem Elahi. A question for Sergio. Once we take a position, can we post that on our website, given it would be public information?
You're muted, Mr. Ridden?
Yes, yes, you absolutely can. And I think it's the city standard practice to post all resolutions and ordinances of the city on its website.
Perfect. Okay. And then I just wanted to bring up something else. Thank you for answering. There was a study done in UC Berkeley. I don't know if everyone else saw this in the paper, but it determined that through SB nine, only 5% of land in California would be deemed eligible for urban lot splits. Only providing 700,000 units, well short of the 2 million needed. So again, this, this is an example of state overreach and it's very important that we protect local control. So I would completely support this ballot initiative for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any further council member comments? Ms. Turner?
Yes, I would also support this initiative. It is an initiative that impacts our land use planning and zoning. It will impact our Housing Accountability Act. It will also impact our Rena numbers. So I would, I would urge the council to vote on this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mecha check, any comments?
I don't have any specific comments on this. It's obviously very emotional and very important, everyone. And I will go along with the time and effort that the other council members have put in investigating this and their recommendation that it's in the city of Monte Sereno's best interest.
Thank you. And I want to commend the council members who have really gathered the information on this and pulled it together. Staff who has put the resolution together for us and keeping us compliant. And I want to say that the city of Monte Sereno is not acting on this out of some sort of NIMBY keeping of, of housing out of the community. This is really as Mayor Potem Elahi said about making sure that there is some local control and local conditions considered. And we are on the ground. We are members of the community. We are answerable to our community. We're not going to be allowed to discriminate. We are going to have many state imposed mandates on, on what we can do and need to promote in our communities. But this is an initiative that is designed to stop what many see as overreach on, on the part of the state to tell every community that they have to be homogeneous. And that one size fits all when it clearly does not. Transportation is not the same. The state is not helping us on these issues. So I'm also supportive of the initiative to push back and to make sure that we try to return to local control what has traditionally been in local control. So with that, do we have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second that.
Okay, councilmember Mecha check?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner? Councilmember Turner?
Yes, sorry.
Sorry, councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Elahi?
Yes.
Mayor Luthold?
Yes.
And that motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Moving now to item three. This is to consider nullifying the prior cancellation of the December 21 council meeting and returning that to the calendar to hold a regular council meeting on December 21st. Do we have a staff report on this first?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Steve Leonardo, city manager. So we adopted the calendar last December. And we would like to recommend council to reverse the elimination of the December 21st meeting by rescinding the ordinance adopting the calendar last year and adopting a new calendar date with the December 21st meeting of this year. We're available for questions, so we can have a regular scheduled meeting this December 21st. And we're available for questions or comments.
All right, thank you. And if I understand, the primary purpose of that, perhaps among other things, but one of the primary purposes is so that we can take action on SB nine and or objective standards. Is that right?
That is correct. We have two ordinances coming forward on December 21st.
Any, any other questions on this from council members? Let's go ahead then and open it to public comment. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the issue of returning the regular December 21st meeting to the calendar? If so, please raise your hand to be recognized. Seeing none, we will close public comment now and return this to discussion or if we don't need discussion, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Turner with a second by councilmember Mecha check. Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Councilmember Mecha check?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Elahi?
Aye.
And Mayor Luthold? That motion passes five zero.
Let's move now to item four. This is to consider and approve the 2022 city council meeting schedule. Do we have a staff report on that or need a staff report on that?
I don't think we need a staff report, but I can give a brief one. This is just the, the proposed meetings for calendar year 2022. We, staff recommends that we cancel the meetings of July 5th and July 19th, which is typical of what we've done in the past, that we have a council member, council meeting break in July to allow for vacations of our council members and available for any questions.
Councilmembers, any questions? All right, let's open this to public comment. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address issues of the 2022 city council calendar? If so, please raise your hand to be recognized. All right, seeing then we will close public comment and return this to council. Councilmember Lawler?
I just wanted to point out that November 1st is November 1st election day. Being the first Thursday of November.
Yes.
So we'll have to change that.
No, the election for 2022 is Tuesday, November 8th.
Oh, it's November 8th. Okay, good. Okay.
For reference, elections code is first Tuesday after the first Monday in November of each year.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Interesting way of stating it. That's almost as complicated as Easter. Okay, all right, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Turner, second by councilmember Mecha check, councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Mecha check?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Elahi?
Aye.
And Mayor Luthold?
Yes.
That motion passes five zero.
All right, before we get to the formal reorganization of city council, I did pull item seven from the consent calendar for further discussion and follow-up. This is the potential approval of a professional services agreement with DiCar Networks for information technology services. And I pulled this for discussion as the issue comes as a bit of a surprise to at least myself. And I believe to other members of the council. So I wanted to hear more about this from the city manager and have some discussion about it. So Mr. Leonardo, do you want to give a staff report on? So, Mr. Leonartis, do you want to give a staff report on this issue?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So periodically, staff reviews contracts that we have with vendors, and we look to improve our operational efficiencies. In this case, we were able to determine that if council were to select Dicar Networks as a new vendor, that we would save significant money on the order of about 1,000 on the monthly service for the labor. And additionally, we believe there will be some savings on software and upgrades and things like that, probably to the tune of $20,000 plus per year. That's our economic analysis of the agreement. Staff has also been reviewing other agreements. This has been something that it is not necessarily, I would categorize it as a surprise. It is just an item we've put on the agenda. I had been working with Mr. Rudden's office probably for about six months on this agreement with this particular vendor going back and forth, and it's something that we've been looking at for a while and just getting to it now. As far as if council were to move forward with the agreement, we have a 15-day notice that we would provide to the existing EOS integration as per their written contract, and then we would, of course, we'd want to engage them to work with the new new network service provider to have some overlap, so there isn't any service problems in the interim. And that would be our transition plan going forward. Again, it's primarily economic. There is possibly some other advantages for service coverage and things as well that I think would help improve operational efficiencies moving forward. So it's been thought about for a long time, well thought out, and it's not something that was taken lightly as, you know, Mr. Kison's EOS integration services have been, you know, good for the city. But it is, you know, a dollars and cents equation, and we bring these items forward for council to have the opportunity to create better efficiencies and save the taxpayers money. That's my comments on this item. Available for questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Mekachak.
I didn't review the scope of work in detail, but I am wondering two things. First of all, we may be doing Zoom calls for a while, and I didn't see the end of those on our meeting schedule. Does this contract include those managing the Zoom meetings? That's question one. And then the question two is regarding the telephone services at city halls. Does it also include those? Is this an apples for apples comparison?
Thank you for your question. According to my analysis, the answer is yes to both of those items. It is a complete services, similar to the services we have now.
Any other council member questions here initially? Councilmember Turner.
Yes, I just, I just wanted to give my input on this. I did some research, and I looked at Dicar Networks, and I believe that the reason why they're charging so much less than our current supplier is because they offer cloud services. So it's software as a service. They offer SaaS, they offer wireless, they offer backup and recovery, which is good. They offer network security, voice and data consolidation. The other thing I like about them as well is that they work with large partners like AT&amp;T, Comcast, Sprint and Aruba. They have a good customer base. The San Mateo Credit Union is a customer of theirs. The Santa Clara Credit Union is another one, and they have others. So I think I would support Dicar Networks, and if we needed more IT services, we can always call Mr. Kison if that's what our city manager agrees to.
Okay, councilmember Lawler, any questions initially here? And then we'll be returning to public comment and council comment later on. But councilmember Lawler.
Yeah, never mind. I'll just comment later. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Councilmember Alahi.
Yeah, I really concerned I have because we really don't know whether there's anything else available at a low price or not. Mr. Kison sent in a letter, which I guess raises some questions, and I guess hopefully Mr. Kison can speak to that as to what that is all about. I was curious in knowing why this wasn't set up for bidding and to see if there's somebody else available that could provide the services. This was going to be opened up, so we could get some competitive bidding going on because that's always helpful from the city's perspective. So, Mr. Leonartis, if you have any response to that.
Yes. Thank you for your question, Mayor Protem. So, you know, this is an operational item, and essentially, we had Mr. Rudden review the contract. We had Mr. Samoranos review the economics of the the contract. We had myself review a couple operational efficiencies. I think councilmember Turner had alluded to some advantages. You know, wasn't necessarily intended to send out an RFP and try to go with an unknown entity to locate a a new IT service, somebody that we're not familiar with. This particular entity was referred to staff by a good source, and that's why we looked at them, and we looked at them very thoroughly. Probably started this process at least eight months ago. I think, as I mentioned earlier, Mr. Rudden had been working on, you know, the agreement going back and forth, getting the insurance requirements and such. Seems like about six months. So we didn't take this process lightly. And I, you know, again, Mr. Kison has been a very, has done a good job for us, but I think this will provide some advantages that will be good for Montesereno, as well as significant cost savings going forward. And as councilmember Turner did mention, you know, there's always the future if there is, you know, if for some reason it doesn't work out.
I appreciate that, and I'm sure you found the right person, but I think something, you know, we need to be transparent. Anytime we are accepting somebody as a contractor who's going to be working for the city, transparency requires that we at least do some kind of a process where other people are invited. I mean, there may be other people who can do a better job and at better rates, but we just don't know at this point. Yeah, there may be people who nobody knows about it, but those can be easily screened out. But without a process of bidding on any of these kind of jobs, I think we are lacking transparency, and I would like to encourage that, and that's the way these things should be taken up, whether it's operations or not operations, and everything ultimately is somebody's operation and somebody's execution. But I think for transparency purposes, we do need to get additional bidding.
All right, thank you. Mr. Leonartis, did you want to respond to that further?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, you know, I'm not entirely certain of what kind of process was used in the past, even when Mr. Kison's service was brought on. I realized that we are a small city, and, you know, I would like to hear Mr. Rudden comment on what would be the process in selecting a vendor such as like a CSG or, in this case, a Dicar Networks for a city such as Montesereno. I know we send RFPs out for, you know, public works projects and such, but not necessarily for something like an agreement for professional services per se. So if Mr. Rudden can comment on that, if that's something that is necessary.
Yes, so with respect to bidding on public works contracts, that's regulated entirely by state law. However, state law basically allows the city to craft its own bidding requirements for all other types of contracts that are not public works. The city does have existing bidding requirements in its city code in chapter 2.05. In general, with respect to professional services, which is, you know, includes attorneys, physician, architects, engineers, other individuals that have a high degree of professional, unique, specialized or technical skill. Our city code says that there's no formal bidding process required for those, and basically, those contracts can be awarded based on the, you know, demonstrated merits of the consultant that you are awarding that kind of contract to. Now, of course, nothing would prohibit the city from doing some sort of RFP for professional services, and most cities, you know, do so on a case-by-case basis, even if they're not strictly required. With respect to all other purchasing, the city has purchasing limits for all other kinds of goods and services, including requirements to get either in formal bids for purchases under 25 grand or formal competitive bidding for all purchases over 25 grand. So those are procedures that are supposed to be followed for, you know, all other purchases that are not professional contracts.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Rudden, and I guess that confirms what Mr. Leonartis's position is. He's run this by you, and you, from your perspective, you gave him a green light that he could go ahead and do this without any, engaging in any kind of bidding process. Would that be a fair understanding of the situation?
Yes, I believe that that's authorized, both under state law and under the city codes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Leonartis.
Right. So I have, I'm going to go ahead and bring up some information from Mr. Kison's email, which he sent a copy to at least me. I'm not sure if anyone else received his email, because I don't want to put him directly on the spot tonight as he is busy providing the services for us this evening. But I wanted to share some of the comments I received from him about his concerns about this, and I'll briefly summarize. He suggests that the cost per month, the services that EOS provides are actually going to net out significantly less than Dicar over time, and that several expenses that he provides that are going to be necessary are not addressed in the Dicar contract, or they will be add-ons. Particularly, they charge interest for late payments. The, and this is again from Mr. Kison, Dicar Networks' remote support and onsite support hours are only 8:30 to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. They have no on-call time in their agreement and no provision apparently to cover activities that occur after 5:00 p.m. Only four hours of onsite time per month, and it looks like it'll include travel charges. They charge minimum and increased rates for after-hours, weekends and holidays. Mr. Kison points out that there are IT incidents on a regular basis, including one as recently as last night when Mr. Leonartis couldn't log into his PC, contacted Mr. Kison, had a password reset generated, and that was taken care of essentially as a courtesy, whereas Dicar would have charged at least 125 minimum dollars, minimum for that. Again, that's some input from Mr. Kison. He also expressed concerns about backup services and network security and those issues. Sounds like Ms. Turner has looked at that and sees some qualifications that Dicar may bring some things to the table. So my suggestion on this is that council consider creating an ad hoc committee as, from my point of view, IT and security not being subject to ransomware. These types of things are really at the heart of keeping the city safe and running smoothly. And I think we really need the council's input. This does come as a surprise to at least me. This may have been going on for eight months, but it didn't involve the mayor, and apparently it hasn't involved any other members of the council. And to simply rely on a contract presented to us on the consent calendar with no really looking into, our service is going to be better and more secure, I think is a little premature. So we do need to go through the public comment process here this evening, but my suggestion is going to be that we agendize a creation of an ad hoc committee for IT contracting to make sure that council expertise is brought to bear on this, and the finance committee's expertise as well is brought to bear on making the best choices for the city so that we don't get into something that looks good on paper but ends up with a lot of additional charges. We just want to make sure we're making the best choice for the city, because in my view, IT is probably one of our most important professional services beyond city manager and city clerk and city attorney. So those will be my suggestions, but let me open this to public comment. If we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this issue, let's go ahead and open public comment and give people the opportunity to speak. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring this back to further council discussion. Any further discussion at this time? Councilmember Lawler.
Yes, thank you. I too did some research and looked at Dicar Networks, and to be honest with you, they look like a very professional outfit. They are headquartered in Morgan Hill. They have two other offices. They have plenty of staff. They have a lot more resources than our existing IT company has, with at least 15 employees, if not more. I firmly believe in change is good. We don't know what we're missing until we try something. I trust our CFO, I trust our city manager, and I certainly trust our city attorney to go ahead with this contract. I believe that it would be beneficial to us, and I hate to micromanage. So I think this falls within our city manager's purview, and I would like to give it a try, and I trust that our, that Mr. Kison would be very helpful in the transition.
Okay, thanks. Other comments?
Yeah, I would like to hear from Mr. Kison. I mean, he's sent a letter, which I, and I think we all got it, but I didn't delve into it as deeply as the mayor did. But if there's something specific that he thinks that he's providing that this Dicar thing will not provide, I'd like to hear from him. I think he is in the attendee box. Maybe there's more to it. That would be good. And the other issue again is really not bringing this to anybody's attention before it was just put on a consent calendar. Even though the city court may allow doing that, I think a better thing to do is to make sure the city council is part of the discussion, is involved with the discussion, and is on board with what's going on.
Further comments? And Mr. Kison, I guess certainly we'll offer you the opportunity to speak to this if you would like to. We understand if you don't want to jump in at this point, either is fine. If you do want to be recognized, raise your hand. If you'd prefer not to, simply leave your hand down. All right, I'm not seeing a hand coming up on Mr. Kison addressing this. He's probably addressed the concerns in what he addressed to the council is what my assumption is. So I guess my concern would be whether we have the ability, if we do make this change, whether we have the ability to again, on relatively short notice, no cancellation penalties, a 15-day notice termination. I hadn't checked that termination clause.
Excuse me, Mayor. There is a message in the chat that Dave, Mr. Kison, is listening by phone, and he is trying to enable his phone so he could speak.
Okay, yeah, I saw that. So we'll go ahead and give him a moment to get the phone enabled, and then he will be able to speak to us. Meanwhile, Mr. Leonartis or Mr. Rudden, did you check and confirm that we have the ability to get out of the Dicar Networks agreement on the same terms, 15 days notice and Uh Dicar Networks agreement on the same terms, uh fifteen days notice and uh no penalties whatsoever?
Yes, that's. That is addressed by section eight of the agreement, um which can be terminated upon fif- fifteen days notice termination with or without cause. Um typically, the compensation would be what they're entitled to for the services they've performed up to the date of termination.
Alright, good, thank you. Alright, let's see if we've got Mr. Kyson's uh phone. Yes, this looks like Mr. Kyson's phone is uh available now. And uh let's go ahead and recognize Mr. Kyson to uh offer some input. Uh directly to the council here. So we'll reopen public comment on this and recognize Mr. Kyson. It's Radcliffe, Mr. Tyson, are we able to uh complete that process to get uh that phone uh link recognized?
I'm not sure what's happening on Mr. Kyson's end. I'm not with him, so.
Okay, it looks like he's been now elevated. He now has the hand and the mute button. So there we go. Now he's recognized.
Okay, sorry. I had to switch uh switch uh systems. So uh. Mayor Lutold, members of the council. I was quite surprised to see the response and the agenda on uh Friday posted about the change in services. I did take some time over Friday, Saturday, Sunday and yesterday. And even sometime today to anal- analyze the statement of work from Dicar Networks. Versus what we are providing the city of Montessorino today. And there seems to be a significant gap in services called out. As being gonna be provided by Dicar. As well as analysis of the last three months of I T services provided by EOS integration. Versus what the actual systems in place at the city of Montessorino. Dicar is actually more expensive on a month-to-month basis. If the city wants to move forward, you know, that is totally your prerogative. I just want you to have all the facts. Thank you.
Thank you. So returning this now to council for further discussion and either action or continuing this to the next meeting. Um let's go ahead and uh see any further input uh from council members at this time.
Mayor, um.
Yes.
May I may I speak? Um.
Yes.
Reynolds Samoranos is on the line and he can further clarify um any questions about the financial analysis. That staff performed. I believe we went back in time since inception of Mr. Kezon's invoices. And we reviewed um those and we compared those to the new agreement. And I understand that there will probably be a difference of opinions on this subject. But there are also other operational efficiencies that I think are advantageous to Montessorino. And there are some other issues as well um that I don't really want to get into in a public forum. But this is um I think a big improvement for Montessorino moving forward. And that's why staff started this process as well as the um opportunity for some savings going forward. So I just wanted to add staff's perspective once again and. Again, um we're available for questions, but if you want to hear from Mr. Samorano, he's on the line.
Okay, thanks. Um Mr. Leon Artis, actually, um one of the questions that uh Mr. Tyson raised was the. Uh time periods uh for uh the services and obviously uh Zoom. Uh services, I T services are running uh into the evening twice a month, if not more. Uh we also have other meeting site and architecture, et cetera. Um is Dicar Networks uh have they directly dealt with the issue in their contract about how that's going to be charged for. Providing the I T services for all our meetings, or what do you have in mind for that?
Thank you for asking the question, Mayor. All we really need is for the Zoom to be set up. And the Zoom could be run by, for instance, Ms. Khan when she does her um Better Streets. Ms. Perkins, when she does her site and architecture, it could be run by Ms. Radcliffe or myself when we do our council meetings. We are here anyway. So it's nice to have Mr. Kaiser on the line, but it's not entirely essential to have him on the line. So um I'm not concerned about that aspect of the agreement moving forward. We just need the support getting everything set up and um. Primarily what uh. You know, I think there's other advantages as were mentioned by other council members. Where we have more than one employee when somebody goes on vacation. Uh there's been instances when I've been the I T guy and or I've been left kind of holding the bag. Um without any resolution, as you know, during one of our meetings with West Valley mayors and managers. You, I had the county supervisor and potentially the district attorney on the line, yet I had no. Zoom password or no capability to conduct a meeting. Mr. Kezon was on vacation and that was, you know. Another instance of a time when having um a firm handle, the I T would present us in a more professional light. And keep the meetings going and keeping people's valuable time um on track, so I. You know, but again, it's deeper than just an economic analysis, but um council's decision, we put it on not to be. Not to um not have it be an open discussion, right? We put it on the on this um agenda, just so it's. Open for discussion this evening. We want to consider all aspects.
Alright, thank you. Any other uh questions, comments?
Is this Mr. Leonardis suggesting that we should do this as a closed item? Fully consider it?
Absolutely not, Mayor Proten. This is um, you know, an open discussion. Um that's why it's on the on the agenda. It was on the consent calendar. Normally, these types of items are um not really. I mean, it's it's basically a staff operational analysis. It's usually kind of a um. And it doesn't get pulled for discussion of this, you know, of this level.
Yeah, I I didn't think.
Again, Mr. Ru- Mr. Ru- reviewed all the agreements. We had staff, the finance manager, review the finance as- aspect of it. And we had staff reviews the technical aspect of it and.
Yeah, that that's great. And we have Mr. Somar- uh Somaros available. So if you could answer the question as to how much money he expects uh. This new project favors on a yearly basis. If he's able to do that.
Well, my analysis included uh a look at the. Consulting expenses from inception, which was May first, two thousand eighteen, through the last invoices received. I believe, let's see. Last invoices received as it pertains to the consulting aspect. Was October of two thousand twenty-one. So in looking at all the invoices relating to specifically consulting. Uh the average invoice came out to twenty-four sixty-five. On a monthly basis.
And when you say average, is that a high time period there? I mean, is that is that?
That's that's an average over the spread of uh from May first, two thousand eighteen through October, two thousand twenty-one.
Yes, so was was there an invoice there that was normally large because the things that had to be done because of pandemic and the setup fees and all that, or?
Well, I I, yeah, I. It's true that uh over the last few months since the pandemic, there's been an upcharge of expenses relating to. Hosting uh these uh Zoom meetings. But overall, over that period of time, I guess that reflects really the average.
What what is the average for twenty twenty-one?
Uh let's see.
Approximately.
To get into the analysis for. Eight thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. Mayor. So that was from a period uh. I guess invoices received from, well, actually, I should add a few more months here. Let me correct that. So I'm looking from a period of invoices received from November. Through October. See fifty thousand fifty eight oh seven. That's four thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-two cents is the average.
Alright, um. Mayor Protem Alahi, did you have uh further follow-up? You're on mute.
I I just don't have a good sense of what the monthly cost is. I mean, is it forty thousand or ten months, or is it eight thousand or ten months? Uh first, Mr. Kisson would tell us what his average has been this year. Because I because I suspect some of the costs that were because of setting us up for the pandemic time period, then it's actually possibly much lower. But uh I just want to get a handle on that if possible, without taking up too much of everybody's time.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I I understand um what um other council members have said. I am not trying to. Uh micromanage, but at the same time, uh this this comes to council. Um at least to several of us with absolutely no advance notice that there was interest in looking at I T. Um and no involvement of us in this process. And whether we should be involved in the process of looking at I T, um I believe we should be. Uh in terms of what the services should be and making sure that the city is protected. And financially making sure that the city is making the best decisions. I understand um that. The city manager is trying to make the best decisions. Uh the uh the finance uh department. Is working on the analysis and Mr. Rudin's trying to make sure, certainly if he's requested, that the contract be one that's appropriate for the city and legal. Um but again, um I think it's, I my my personal view is that council should have a role in. The selection of I T and the scope of work of I T and and these concerns. Um if uh county, if a majority of the council wants to simply defer to the city manager's decision and go with this. Uh certainly, it can be done. Again, my suggestion would be that we we actually take an active role, not because I want to second guess this. Or cause trouble for this, but because I want to make sure that the council is um making the best decisions possible for the city, but. Up to the uh council, the majority on this, uh so. Let's kind of go around and see where people are about whether this is something that um people are interested in. Having an ad hoc and more city council involvement, or whether you want to just uh make the change and uh see what happens. Let's um let's kind of go around the room. Uh Councilmember Mechacheck, I was gonna call on you first. You're my on my upper left anyway.
Thank you. Um my first question, uh when this. When we started talking about this was, is it an apples-to-apples uh scope of work? And uh I would like to ask our finance director if he believes that. That it is an apples-to-apples and if it is and it's less expensive. Then my my thinking would be, I would I would uh. Be along the on the same page as Councilmember Lawler that said, let's not micromanage this. Let's just do our due diligence. Make sure it's okay. If it's apples-to-apples, it's a lower cost, same service or better service. Then let's go with what a city manager, Leon Artis, is recommending in his role as city manager and being frugal with. Uh our uh expense budget. That's is but uh. Uh if our finance manager could respond to that question, it'd be great.
Yes, Councilmember uh Mike and Chuck, I did look at the numbers and, you know, in. In Dave's invoices, you know, he provides these invoices separated by software. And hardware as well as technical support or remote support consulting. And I separated all that and simply looked at, you know, what are the dollars that we're spending for his services, his uh. Mental or intellectual talent. And you know, while there are significant differences in the cost, I believe, from. Uh the new service that we're considering versus uh EOS's services. I think the other benefit to this new scenario is bringing in new ideas. And current technology that's being used uh mainstream with other organizations, which I for frankly, I can't. I can't measure that. Um I can only say that that added um information. And perhaps alternatives to providing technology here in our office could possibly have some savings. But I can't, I can't put that in numbers. I can only say that whatever that op- other option is that the other. Organization can offer um might be more efficient and hence require less man-hours for consulting. If that makes sense.
That makes total sense. Thank you.
Alright, so moving around the room, uh Councilmember Lawler.
Uh, thank you. Yes, I would like to, I would actually like to make a motion to approve this contract. I think we should. Move into the twenty-first century and have the best possible options available to us. We know that we can cancel it in fifteen days without cause if. If something, if we're not happy with it, I think we should go ahead and give it a try. I know it was very difficult when we were first dealing with COVID. We didn't have the technology installed to deal. And so it it, you know, hiring a company that's got a much broader base and a lot more access to things. I think would be very helpful for us.
Okay, Councilmember Turner.
Uh yes, I'm looking at the positive side on this, right? So I think what we have here is a fault tolerant server service. So if if EOS is not available, we use we use Dicar. And we only pay for the service that we use. That's what cloud computing is all about, and that's what software as a service is all about, so. You know, I I I don't think this is a do-or-die decision. I think we have the best, we could have the best of both worlds. Just just wait and see. It's this is gonna be like six click fix, right? You wait and see. So I would vote yes.
Alright, um Councilmember Mechacheck, you've got your hand up again.
I will second Councilmember Lawler's uh motion.
Alright, we have a motion. We have a second. Um let's go ahead and have a vote on this.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Mechacheck?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Protemp Alahi?
I I'm gonna abstain mainly because uh not enough transparency was provided in this case. I mean, I would really encourage our city manager. To bring these things to our attention. I mean, we don't want to mic- micromanage anything, but if you just get something at the last second. Uh which given and we're not really sure about whether the cost is better. And again, I what I heard was that the service these guys are providing is a bit different from the service that we received before. Uh and and so that's the reason I'm gonna abstain, because I think we really need to get the transparency going. And I encourage our staff to provide us and keep the, you know, the the mayor and others, where else is involved. Involved with the process. And secondly, the question on the I P committee, I think it's a separate one, and we should talk about having an end of I P committee anyway. Because that's a separate issue. Because that's a separate issue. So I'm going to abstain.
And Mayor Luthol.
Yes, and for the reasons that Mayor Potemalahi abstained, I'm going to be a no on this. And really, the issue is lack of transparency, lack of communication with the council. That needs to end. Council needs to be up to speed on this. All five members of the council need to have all the information on major issues that are arising in the city on a real time basis. So we're not surprised by this. That as as Mayor Potemalahi said, that needs to be fixed. This wouldn't have been a problem if it had been communicated that it was coming up and what the benefits were and that the considerations had been made. But coming is a surprise. This is a no.
My question passes three one one.
Thank you. Moving now to item five on the new business calculate calendar. This is city council reorganization. We will now move to the issue of election of the mayor first and then mayor pro tem and remarks by the outgoing mayor. Actually, I think we can turn this upside down a little bit. I'll keep my remarks very simple. My remarks are a big thank you to city staff and to my fellow council members for all your hard work during this challenging second year of COVID. And I really appreciate everybody's work and everybody's patience getting this done and keeping the city on the right track, serving our constituents, taking care of our of our citizens and doing our jobs. This is generally a thankless job, as we all know, but our citizens don't always know and don't always appreciate. We are not compensated for this in any way. No stipends, no health benefits, no nothing. We do this out of the goodness of our hearts, and we spend our own money to to get into this position. That said, the one benefit that comes from being on city council is the the opportunity to serve as mayor. And that is really the the high point, I think, of any council members' time on the council. It's something that's very important that the council, I came onto this council initially straightening out the prior councils not selecting the mayor properly. And that was some drama, and there was an issue around that. We cleaned that up so that the mayor is selected by the council to serve the council. And we also confirmed at that time that it is still our intention to take turns passing this honor amongst ourselves so that everyone on the council should get an opportunity to serve as mayor if they wish that. With that in mind, I would like to nominate Mayor Pro Tamalahi to be the next mayor of the city of Monte Serena. If we have any further nominations for mayor, the procedure allows that. And then we would have a vote in reverse order on the various nominations. So my nomination is for Mr. Alahi, a single nomination is all that's required. We don't need a second on that. Do we have any other nominations? Seeing none, let's have a vote.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Mecha check?
I.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Potemalahi?
I.
And Mayor Luthol?
Yes.
That passes five zero.
And with that, I will pass the gavel to the new mayor to manage the nomination for Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you very much, and I really appreciate the unanimous vote. I think this whole year, the city council has really worked together, and I think Mayor Little and the rest of others deserve a lot of credit for bringing us all together. We've had differences, obviously, because that's what we are here for, to present our point point of view. But none of it has been personal. We treated each other with a lot of professional respect and with integrity. So I appreciate that. I'm going to have a few more remarks, but first I'd like to go ahead and nominate the mayor pro tem. We've been fortunate to have Mr. Brian Mecha check join us on the city council. He's done a great job. He's also been on the executive committee or the finance committees and audit committee with Silicon Valley Clean Energy. He's also done a tremendous job, and he's also the finance committee on the city, and I and him look forward to working together on that one. So I am going to go ahead and nominate Brian Mecha check for their program. Is there a, I guess I I have to get after asking, thank you. Is there any other nomination for me to put in?
Yes, yes, Mayor Alahi, if I may. I would like to nominate councilmember Turner to serve as mayor pro tem for the following reasons. One, it follows precedent that the council member with the highest votes in the last election be nominated. And most importantly, number two, councilmember Turner's experience and leadership, especially with respect to housing legislation and SB nine will serve our council and city well as we see the impacts of SB nine unfold beginning in January. I make this nomination, of course, with the expectation that councilmember Mecha check will succeed her as mayor pro tem in December of next year. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Lawler. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I think we worked in reverse order. So first we vote for electing the word for councilmember Turner as mayor for ten. So all those in favor, please say aye.
I'll have I'll have to do a real call vote.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Mecha check?
No.
Mayor Potemalahi?
No.
And Mayor Luthol?
No.
Okay. So that nomination has not been approved. The other nomination we has have is for Brian Mecha check. So we'll again do a roll call award. Also, councilmember Turner, did you have a question?
Yes, um, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I want you to know that I am very disappointed in this council. I suspected that this game was afoot, but I hope for more from my fellow council members. I think the people of Monte Serena expect more from us. You all know that we rotate the positions of mayor and mayor pro tem every year so that every council member has an opportunity at leadership. And as you know, that order of rotation is the order in which we were elected. And for people elected in the same year, the order is determined by the number of votes of each of us received. In keeping with tradition, I am the designated council member for the mayor pro tem rotation, not councilmember Mecha check. I am the council member with the most experience. I have served five years, and I have held both positions previously. I have a record of accomplishments. Yep, you chose to pass me over. I guess I shouldn't be surprised. Two of you have harassed and discriminated against me for well over a year. Is it because I'm a minority, or is it because of my political affiliation? Or is it something even more sinister? Is it because you and your cronies wanted to do things that would absolutely be devastating for the city? And you know, I would fight it tooth and nail. I know what you were planning, and I know what you did. Councilmember Mecha check, this is for you. I know about your part in all of this. Normally, in political squabbles like this, the families are off limits. You were not content to merely attacking me. You attacked my family. You sent letters. I know about your phone calls. And you what you did was utterly contemptible, utterly contemptible. This is something you're going to have to live with with your wife and your children. In spite of what you do, in spite of what you are and your cronies, what you did to me and my family, I chose not to make this public for a long time because I still needed to work with both of you. I thought it was good for the city and the citizens of Monte Serena. But the two of you aren't going to stop, are you? So maybe it's time, I think, I should rethink this decision. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, councilmember Turner. We are going to vote on the election of the mayor. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
I need to do a recall vote, Mayor Alahi.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Okay, councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Mecha check?
We're voting on Brian Mecha checks appointment as mayor pro tem.
Correct.
Oh, mine is no.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Lawler, did you want to change your vote also?
Would you like me to start over?
Start again, I guess.
This is for councilmember Mecha check as mayor pro tem. Councilmember Lawler?
I abstain.
Councilmember Turner?
No.
Councilmember Mecha check?
Yes.
Mayor Potemalahi?
Yes.
And Mayor Luthol? Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor, councilmember Luthol? And Mayor Alahi?
Yes.
That motion passes three one one.
All right. So congratulations, Mayor Potem, Brian Mecha check. You certainly deserve this position. And I look forward to working with you, and I hopefully the rest of the council will do that too in the interest of the city and not feel that because they have not been elected to a position, they need to act accordingly. So welcome on the board. I also want to make a I also want to acknowledge Mayor Luthol's efforts last year and everything that he's accomplished. So if you can give me a couple of minutes, I'll go ahead and do that. During Mayor Little's term, the city approved the board of ethics. There were challenges to the A bag allocation where the city was required to have one hundred ninety-two houses built and Mayor Luthol met the challenge by filing appeals and actually personally appeared, uses attorney skill to present the case for the city that was not appropriate for A back to put one hundred ninety-two houses on us. Unfortunately, the A bag individuals who are running it, even though they are also council members felt that the state mandate required them to just rubber stamp everything now and not accept any appeals. During Mayor Luthol's time, we dealt with pandemic issues. And the city provided funding for organizations that needed funds. The Ross Lightning Andrews Lighting Assessment District was dissolved because it was costing us more to assess the residents of the little neighborhood than what we generated. There was a lot of movement on street improvements. The Dave's Neighborhood Streets was improved. There was a Xena Drive and Clara Street and Natalie Drive were also improving. And more and most important is during his term, the city was able to cut down the bids and save almost five hundred thousand by paying the bid instead of having one bidder do all three states, we separated it so that one state was done and then the other two were done. And we saved and that saved the city five hundred thousand dollars. There is a and Mayor Mayor Luthol was also involved with the San Jose Water District where the city was going to do what what district was trying to raise the rates for the cities. And councilmember Brian Mecha check played a vital role testifying as a witness before the PUC. There was another successful picnic that was done. The sea click fix project was launched, and I I commend councilmember Turner for moving forward with it, and I hope that process becomes a vital process for the city. It's a process where any citizen can go forward and file the complaints or whatever issues they have, and it'll be a transparent project. I'll still have to be babys babysit and personally hand carried, and I hope councilmember Turner continues to do that so that the city can see a good sea tick project. There is a issue of SB nine and SB ten, which is really important, and we are moving forward with that. The objective standard test that has to the city has to come up with, and we're having another meeting, especially for December twenty first. Hopefully, we can present something so that we can maintain the character of the city of Monte Serena and and Mayor Luthol really pushed that and and has kept us on track and even of course, is also forcing us to come back on this twenty first to attend a meeting. Another resolution that was passed was requiring gun storage safety, which, you know, from what happened in recently. That's a very important resolution that requires all Monte Serena citizens who have guns to put them in a safe place. You know what has happened because somebody got access to a gun and went up and shot four four other people, and hopefully they'll never happen in the city. We had a resolution denouncing anti Asian hatred. There was a fence ordinance that was approved. And then Monte Serena has a very active youth commission and councilmember Lawler played a very active role in keeping that commission together and having them move forward with the things for the city. And at this time, there's a court drive that's on. So anybody who has courts that they can give give to the city, they should go ahead and drop them off. I think that's good till December twenty second or something, and the youth commission will go ahead and distribute those. So thank you very little for everything you've done, and thank you to all the councilmen. I think you've all done a great job last year. And I really hope that spirit would continue, and we can move forward. Thank you. That's all I have to say. Is there anybody else who has any comments? Okay, let's see. Councilmember Mecha check had his hands first.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Elie. I would like to say that I believe the strength of the current council is that we work as a team and we have different strengths. And together, we're better than we are individually. And I would just like to say I will do my best for the city of Monte Serena and to work with city council as as a as a team that that has their own opinions and perspectives, but the one common thing that all of us have is to do the absolute best for the city of Monte Serena. And I'm proud to be a part of this council.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Councilmember Lawler?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Alahi. I just wanted to say congratulations, Mayor Alahi, and congratulations, Mayor Potem Mecha check. I for you fully. I look forward to a great year and again, congratulations.
Thank you. Councilmember Luthol, it sounds funny, but please go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I I just want to comment here very briefly regarding Ms. Turner's concerns. The Ms. Turner's concerns and her comments are noted. I just want to state that my vote here for the mayor pro tem is really based on the idea that I believe that the mayor should have a high role in that decision as opposed to the the tradition or the number of votes. I think it's really critical that the mayor choose the mayor pro tem they work with. The mayor pro tem is not absolutely a lock for becoming the mayor because each council chooses its mayor when the time comes. So next year, there may be an assumption that a mayor pro tem takes over. But that's not necessarily the case. The members of the new council after the election will choose their mayor. And that's the way it should be. So that's my feeling is that it's a respect for the mayor's choice on this. I do hear the concerns, and I will be working with all council members to bridge any gaps to move things forward. But obviously, in the public forums and with my Brown Act buddies as appropriate. So again, congratulations. Thank you to the council. Looking forward to the next year.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Luthol. Councilmember Turner, have your hand up or is that from?
Yes, I just wanted to say congratulations to both of you.
Thank you very much, and really look forward to working with you, and maybe we sit down and go over some of the concerns that you have that we can address them. And maybe we could sit down and go over some of the concerns that you have, that we can address them. Do I open this up to the public? Does the public have any comments? Okay. Apparently one attendee with their hands up. See who that is.
We have a hand up from Sean, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing the name, Shanawaz Segal.
Okay, Mr. Segal, would you like to unmute and do you want to address this?
Thanks for bringing me on. I'd like to congratulate San Antonio, Monteserino City Council for voting in a new mayor, Javi Delai. Congratulations. And Mayor Protem Brian Metcalf and everybody else who participated in the, participated in the process. It was great listening to all the issues that are there. And for everybody to work together in this whole scenario, I really like that. And it was, everybody was open. And I'm glad that they'll be working together, which is, you know, which is what's needed in this day. So with that, I just, you know, wanted to thank everybody to participation and, and looking, looking forward for the people of Monteserino. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Segal. All right, I don't think we have any other hands up. And is there anything else we need to talk about? Do we need to do reports from, I should look at the agenda. So what's the next item on the agenda? That's to have city council member reports.
Committee and commission reports followed by council member reports, then city manager reports and future agenda items.
Thank you so much. So committee and council member reports, committee and commission reports. Councilmember Lawler?
Yes, well, I was going to say, I have a council member comment, not a commission report. But if, if anyone else has a commission report, they can go before me.
No, you can go ahead.
Okay, well, I just wanted to mention that today I attended the Board of Supervisors meeting regarding the redistricting of Santa Clara County. And, and I don't know if you're any, any of you are aware, but they have approved a map that has taken Monteserino, Almaden and Los Gatos and placed us all in District Five with, with seven other cities or six other cities. So now nine out of the 15 cities in Santa Clara County only have one representative on the Board of Supervisors. So I just wanted to let everyone know that that's what's happening. And yes, that's, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And so who's the supervisor for this district?
Currently, right now, District Five is Supervisor Semidian, who is a very experienced supervisor. He's been in a state assembly, he's been a state senate, he's been a school, school board. He's, he's pretty much hit every office there is except governor. So, and he's terming out. So whoever the new supervisor will be for District Five is going to have a lot of cities. And his concern was, and mine as well, was what he called cracking, stacking and packing. When you take all these cities and you pack them into one district, you are effectively limiting the voice of especially small cities like ours, Monteserino. And I said so today on, on their, on the Zoom call with them. So unfortunately, you know, it failed three two with Supervisor Semidian and President Wasserman voting no on this particular map. So this map certainly makes it challenging, especially for us to have any kind of voice in the county.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Are there any other commission reports, comments?
Question for Councilmember Lawler. Which, which map got approved? Because I sent notes to three of the supervisors saying that I supported the one that kept us in the original sort of layout, if you will. Did that, which one went through?
Actually, would you believe it? So President Wasserman reintroduced EE point two today and they had, they added two more maps. The map that was approved has a nine in front of it. I think it was nine oh nine one zero or some, that was the final map. It was new, so it hadn't even been discussed at the previous meeting. But it's very similar to what was deemed the Unity Map. And so with particular attention to the Evergreen Neighborhood and the east side of our county. It's not even up on the website that I can tell, but that's the map that was approved.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? If not, we'll go to the next item, which is, which is council member comments. Yeah, Brian, please go ahead. Councilmember, Mayor Protem Mekachak, please go ahead.
Thank you. I did want to give everyone an update on the San Jose Water Company rate case. And it's, I'll try to simplify it. There's three parties. There's a party that obviously is San Jose Water Company. There's the Public Advocates Group or Cal Advocates. And then there's a group called W Rates. And I ended up being the representative for W Rates. And I was involved in cross, cross-examining San Jose Water Company today, including the CFO for, from nine twenty until three forty-five PM. So it was a, it was a pretty long day with only a 50-minute break in front of the CPUC. And today was day one of the evidentiary hearings. And there's day two and day three ahead. And I will report back after day three.
Thank you. I think you've done a great job with the, that whole process and going for the PUC. Hopefully it gets approved. Any other council member comments? All right, then the next item on the agenda is city manager's report. Mr. Leonares, if you're clear to, if you guys can vote on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Alahi. I wanted to reiterate something you mentioned earlier. Our youth commission is collecting coats for those in need. And so far, we've received a number of drop-offs here at City Hall. I want to encourage the public now through December 31st to continue to drop off those usable clean items that you no longer need. And they can be donated to West Valley Community Services where they will be distributed to those in need this season. And we also received a box of canned food as well. So if you want to drop off those types of items, they can also be brought to West Valley Community Services. I have a couple of other announcements. We have tomorrow evening, a special site and architecture committee meeting at 7:00 PM, primarily covering our objective standards and our SB nine stuff prior to our next council meeting. So for those who wish to attend, please join us. The information is available at cityofmonteserino.org. Last but not least, Mayor Alahi, you also mentioned Xena has been repaved as part of our street repavement project last year. We will be doing Natalia and one other street in January. But if I would like to invite council out to take a look at Xena, did a fantastic job on the repayment of the street. I think the PCI was originally about 35%. They had a lot of special circumstances redoing that street, pouring in the concrete rain gutter on both sides of the road as well as putting in the new asphalt. But it turned out very well. I think the residents are very happy. I'd like to commend engineer Jessica Kahn for her efforts in getting that, that process, that project completed. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I think all those streets that have been redone, they're, they're looking really good. I'm not so sure about the just, I think it's looking overall good. But we need to look at that at some point. Ms. Reddick, if you have your hand up?
Yes, I just wanted to give a brief report or update on the Sea Click Fix project.
Wonderful.
Yeah, I've been in touch with the Sea Click Fix team and we are in the process of creating a Monteserino app. It does take about 30 days for the app to, the app approval from Google and Apple. So we are currently in the process of obtaining that from, from Apple and Google. So we expect to have the app up and running mid-January. That's the timeframe that Sea Click Fix has, has given me. But I just wanted to let you guys know where we were at on that.
Yeah, thank you very much. And please continue giving those reports. I'm sure Councilmember Turner is very interested in that. Councilmember Turner, please go ahead.
Yes, I wanted to recognize just Michelle Quong and, and Michelle Radcliffe for their post on Nextdoor. It was easy to follow and it was very customer user friendly. So thank you for that.
Any, any other comments? All right. So now we go to the next item, which is future agenda items. If you have, you, anybody who would like to suggest any? Councilmember Luthol?
Yes. As I brought up before, I would like to discuss potentially putting as a future agenda item, potentially as early as the next meeting, if it's not overwhelmed by SB nine and objective standards, to have a ad hoc committee for taking a look at the city's IT and IT resiliency so that we can really make sure that, that the city is set to deal with the problems of 2022 and beyond with ransomware, with phishing attacks and with the IT services that we'll have as we move to hybrid models and hybrid in-person meetings. So if that can come forward as early as the next meeting, then that could fit with the ad hoc committee assignments by the new mayor. If there's going to be an additional ad hoc committee. So I'd like to see that on the next meeting if others agree.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to comment on that or show their agreement by knocking, by moving their heads up and down? For sideways, up and down is better. All right.
And I guess just, just to follow up on that, city council members can obviously force the issue of putting something on or the mayor can work with city staff to schedule that if it's something that the mayor is interested in seeing come on calendar. So.
Yeah, I'd ask the council, city manager, Mr. Leonares, if that can be put on the next December 21st agenda, please do so.
Thank you, Mayor Alahi. I think we can certainly put on a discussion about the formation of an ad hoc committee for IT services.
So is that the meeting we appoint our committees also on?
No, that meeting is, City Clerk Michelle Radcliffe here. That meeting is done at the first meeting in January, I believe.
All right, so we can, I can, we can have a discussion on that or committee next meeting and then point either at that meeting or the follow-up meeting. All right, thank you. Councilmember Turner, you still have your hand up?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Or not having any further discussions, I guess. Let me see if I have any agenda items for next time. I think some of the things we are looking at is still that the, the question of whether we should return to person or hybrid meetings. That question has to come up every 30 days, I believe. So we'll probably have it in the January meeting. We need to figure out how to do better communication between city council and staff. That came up today in discussing the contract with the internet provider. So we need to talk about it. Council, city managers, people in others, if you have some thoughts on that, please share them with us or with me, you know, directly or indirectly, that would be good. We have the Monteserino building, which we initially had a bill for $750,000 and that went out to rebid. And I'd like to get a status update on that, maybe that could be provided next time. There was an issue on whether we should participate in the Cities Association of Santa Clara County because of the fees that they were asking for. I don't know if that was resolved or not, we need to bring it back. And then obviously we have the objective standard issue that's going to come up next agenda. So we can discuss that next time. Those are the thoughts that I have and I would give you a couple of city managers to putting that on, on an agenda at the appropriate time. Any, are there some more people in chat that have their hands up or are we good? Yeah, I think we're good. Anything else? If not, I guess we can close this meeting. And I thank you all for your, for your word of confidence in me. I'm unanimous, we as mayor. And I look forward to helping you out and I'm here to help everybody out. And I know some people have personal issues and I would love to just sit one-on-one and see if we can get those resolved. Thank you and have a good night. Take care.
Bye, everyone.